I call the Maplewood City Council meeting to order on Tuesday, June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Please rise and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item three, please.
Councilmember Crossley.
Here.
Councilmember Buckingham.
Here.
Councilmember Homa.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Mayor Knapper.
Here.
Here.
Mayor Forman is present.
Thank you. Item number four is not necessary. So, Madam Clerk, item number five.
Approval of the council agenda.
May I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, item number six.
The public forum.
At this time, if you are joining us via Zoom, then please raise your Zoom hand, and Mr. Reese will call upon you. And if anyone in the gallery would like to approach the podium and provide a comment, you are welcome to do so at this time. Mr. Reese? All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, item number seven.
Announcement?
Are there any announcements?
First of all, save the date for Let Them Eat Art. That is, since we are only having one council meeting this month, we're announcing it a little bit early, so that will be July eighth from six to ten P. M. in downtown Maplewood. So don't forget about Let Them Eat Art. We also have coming up next, this weekend, the Juneteenth Community Festival this Saturday, June eighteenth, from one to four P. M. at the Yale Green Space, twenty-two seventy Yale Avenue. The free event will be filled with food, music, and activities for the whole family. And also, the city has launched a community job board on the website. This will be updated as positions with our Maplewood businesses become available. There are currently three jobs posted. You can find that on cityofmaplewood.com/communityjobboard.
Thank you. Any additional announcements? Madam Clerk, item number eight.
Approval of the May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two city council meeting minutes and close session minutes.
May I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, item number nine.
Design and review board report by Sean Gorman.
I know, I know.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, esteemed members of the board, staff members, everybody else. I'm the appointed chairman of the Designer Review Board here in Maplewood. And we meet monthly, every month in this room. It's open to public, and of course, everybody's welcome to come and encouraged to do so. City Manager Reese asked me to speak to you tonight about the Designer Review Board. He actually asked me to report on it. He did not, however, give me a timeframe. Apparently, Mr. Reese forgot that I'm a lawyer. I think ninety minutes will do fine. But anyway, but as I say, seriously, folks. I couldn't report on the things that we do. This kind of application was taken, that kind was done, this number was done, that was done, this building was involved, that building wasn't involved. That might take all of those ninety minutes. Instead, I want to let you know about our charge as a board and how it fits into the overall governance and future of the city of Maplewood. I could read that ordinance, but again, let's talk about that ninety-minute thing, all right? So with your permission, Madam Mayor, I would like to paraphrase.
By all means, thank you.
Thank you. Designer Review is charged with the duty of approving proposed exterior alterations in projects that will affect the exterior appearance of the building, and by association, therefore, all of Maplewood. The ordinance provides some guidance for the standards that we should follow. The approval should not be granted. It is detrimental, inharmonious, or inconsistent with the property and the surrounding areas. And/or, if it would be excessive and unreasonably dissimilar or inappropriate in relation to any of those structures. And/or, if it would be excessively similar to any of those structures. The ordinance includes under provides some criteria that we identified as different tools to use in that. Okay, paraphrasing just gave you back another ninety minutes of your time. So anyway, as you can tell from that charge and explanation from the statute, it can't be inconsistent. It can't be dissimilar, and it can't be similar. In theory, the obvious incongruities would make this impossible to ever approve anything. In practice, of course, projects do get approved. There are only two exceptions that I can think of in the last ten years, but with modifications, revisions, and changes, they're granted in their differences and in their similarities. All is exceptions to the owner's hopes and expressions thereof, and despite desire of their desires and their individual realities. It should not come as a shock to anyone in this room tonight. All of us know that Maplewood is a city that has similarities and differences unlike most areas in this region. A fascinating mixture of people, businesses, of styles, and realities. That, ladies and gentlemen, I would assert is a fact. There are two tools that make this ordinance practicable and workable. Both tools are buried deep in the statute, but placed there with, I believe, great wisdom. The first, that the finding of the board may not be based on personal preferences as to taste or choice of architectural style. The finding of the board may not be based on personal preferences as to taste or choi- choice of architectural style. Second, section twelve dash seven-two, and let me read you this one. The Designer Review Board shall, to the greatest extent practicable, furnish advice and consultation to applicants for building permits or other persons contemplating building or developing in the city. So that's my report about the Designer Review Board. Month in, month out, six people walk into this very room, walking on a tightrope, balancing the unbalanceable, and yet still play their part in the cer- in the future and development of this city. Looking to the future, our board looks forward to the continued challenges of balancing these subjective and objective issues that are present presented to Maplewood as if the future unfolds in front of us. In closing, I'm not big on thanking the people for their assistance, so I won't do that. But I will say the route the work of Brian Herr for this committee, I do not see how it could function. If anyone has any questions, of course, I have reserved the remainder of ninety minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman. Well, I'll let you know, I don't, I don't think that this is going to be too hot of a bench, so you're, you're good. I, no, don't go though. I, I, come back. So I just wanted to, excuse me, ask how, let me back up. So last year, you and I had a conversation about ensuring that information is passed along to new members of this board. And so I know we, we talked about that, had a very good conversation, which was you saying, yes, this needs to happen because this is a very technical board and that you had planned on doing that. So would you just speak to us about that?
Well, what's going, what the problem you run into is, is that Maplewood is a wonderfully eclectic place. It's real, it's, it's, it's architecture is wonderfully eclectic, which is both a good thing and a bad. The good thing is, pretty much whatever you approve, there takes a really bad one, will fit in, okay? The downside is, is that, oh, I'm sorry. Punch the button, Sean. Don't want that one. Do it number two. So anyway, it's hard to talk with only one hand, too, so. But the, the, it allows things to be, both, wonderful eclectic, as you could approve pretty much anything. The downside is, is that people want, who come here, developers in particular, contractors, new potential homeowners, want some idea about what they can do and what they can't do. And it is disheartening when people come in with ideas that we just, it won't work. And it takes some time and effort to get them on board with what does work, and, and that is actually the most rewarding part about this, is that when we're done, people are reasonably happy. So, so the problem is, is how do we figure out how to do that? I think that one of the big things is to make sure that we have a rolling board, which we do, that is able to understand from the beginning of what's going on. The problem is, there's no archives to any of this. And there's no discussions to any of this. So one of the things that we, that I think we're going to try and start doing is have time after the meeting, just a half an hour, whatever it is, to talk about, you know, what design means. And, you know, I'm, I'm a lawyer, I'm not an architect, I don't even play one of those on television. So it's, with our connection as engineers and designers, we've got a quick, I mean, people who do, who are involved daily in the trades or whatever, are able to impart that information, and if we can do that on a rolling basis to the new members as they come in, I think that will be a significant thing. And I think that if we begin to codify some of the more controversial things, that, I mean, most of them are pretty straightforward. I mean, is the fence tall enough, or isn't it, or is, are you going to match, you know, match the shingles and match with the building? If you're going to build a garage, you make sure the shingles are the same. I mean, those are fairly straightforward, and don't really need to be codified. But a recent case where how, how a garage sat on a lot relative to the people down the hill. And it was not, that was, that was a difficult matter to get set up. And the lessons that we take away from that are that we have to remember that when we're looking at a project, that you have to be able to consider, what is it going to look like from a downhill member, not just from the other pieces of property? So you can't just look at it at one level, and that's a piece of, of information that we want to pass on to the next people. And that will be something that would be codified. If it's going to be something, for instance, in this case, it was tall. It was a max height situation, and, and, and the, 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 the street below was very, very low. So it was okay in terms of that lot, but in terms of what it looked like to the neighbor, and in the end, the last thing they said before, it was on Zoom, the last thing they said before they hung up was, I'm just saying this, Fred, if I come on down for a beer. And which is really, that was not how it started. Okay, so I mean, those are things that can be passed along, and, and you can't really put those in ordinances, but that's the, the codification. Then, and then when you, and I'm working on orientation for a new member, here's, so bring them in, sit down, say, okay, here's what we've been doing, here's how we're doing it. What can you bring to that situation? Don't ever hesitate to talk, and stuff like that, where, you know, a lot of times, new people that come in are kind of, you know, they want, they want to get to lay the line out before they do, and I understand that, but, but the point is, is that if we come in with a procedure for onboarding, to steal a H R phrase, to these people, I think that would be a great moving in the right direction. So, and then also, of course, one of the things that really, really needs to be done is we need to, to, to give guidance to you and whoever else about the kind of people we need on the board. Obviously, start with good people, otherwise, they wouldn't bother to be there. I've never met anyone who's, there wasn't, okay? There are some technical skills that would be nice to have, and not easy to acquire. I, I have to give you that. I talked to every known architect, I think, in the city, and hopefully I didn't miss anybody. And there is not the depth of people wanting to do this that I would have thought, but, so it's, it's, and because I say that because Jennifer, the architect that's on our board, just retired last week, went drinking.
I see that.
Anyway, okay, good. So that's what, you know, I mean, those are the things that go on, and that's the, the, the steps that I want to propose as a format, making that much more formal. And so the people that come in, you know, they feel more comfortable to talk with it, so they've got some idea about where we're going from, so they're not just sitting there for six months or a year, not, not inputting their, their stuff to it, so. Again, it would be easier if we lived in Newtown, in St. Charles. So the room will be this big, it will be this gullible, and it will be this far hot, okay? So that would be easy. Or if we lived in a city that doesn't care, that would also be easy. I doubt there would be a board. So the people do care, the board members do care, and it is an important function, not easy, but important.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate you all thinking about and finding the solution to ensure that information is passed on to new members that, that don't have the experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I just have a quick question slash comment. The, you're probably aware that we're doing a comprehensive review of all of our ordinances. The committee that I'm working on happens to be zoning, and one of those things that my committee is.
That's got to be a thankless job.
Yeah, hundred and ten pages of zoning ordinances.
We'll get it down.
So one of the things that we are currently working on, that will be before council very shortly, is accessory dwelling units, accessory uses. So I just wanted to make it clear to your group that we will, my intention is that the process that we have for conditional use permits, as well as the design and review process, will remain for those accessory units, because obviously, they're structured.
It'd be hard, it'd hardly be do without that, and I think it's an important part of it, and it's something that, that's a political decision needs to be made, right? And when the, when that decision gets made, however it goes, I think it will be, it will flow much easier and much better if that removes itself from the political arena and goes into the technical aesthetic realm. So I mean, and I'm looking forward to that, and, you know, and how that ordinance is written, good luck. I mean, that's a tough ordinance. It's a tough ordinance now, it's a tough ordinance whenever, it's always been, so that's very difficult to do, so. Uh, yeah, no, and the other ordinance that the people talked about, and I'm not sure that it's political, but you ever heard of a snout-first home?
Yes, and I'm not.
Well, they are not, they are not the favorite child of the Designer Review, but a number of them were built, sort of not against our judgment, but kind of, and the snout-first homes, for everyone that doesn't know, is a, is a house that has lots of garage, that has a side door to the, to the building. It's basically what hit them out to, and that's what they look like, and there was, I think that phrase is coined in somewhere in California, anyway. There, that's the sort of thing where, given a requirement, yes or no, would be a problem. We just approved a quote snout-first unquote, except for they look more like a craftsman house. It was designed for a very small lot. The door was recessed and not in front, and there was, and there was, and there was, the thing that we really like to see on every house is a front porch, Miranda, whatever you want, Miranda, whatever you want to call it. And it had one on it, albeit small, but it was a very small lot. So banning something is not always a good thing, but particularly when it comes to that. So in any event, no, I'm, one way or the other, you know, bring it in, and, and, and I think it would benefit greatly from being removed from the technical and political parts of that and stuck over in the aesthetic portion, which is what we do. So don't, always let us send it back to you. So if people don't like it, when I hit, don't talk to us, talk to council. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number ten.
A resolution of the city council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri, affirming that greater safety requirements must be implemented to prevent the violent use of firearms in the United States of America, state of Missouri, and city of Maplewood.
Before I ask for a motion, I am going to read this resolution. I would like for council to know, and our, our community to know, that Mr. Reese and I, we worked on this resolution together. And in our partnership, we also had a partnership with the Maplewood Richmond Heights Board of Education, as well as Superintendent Dr. Benita Jameson, as the Board of Education is also working on a resolution of the same form. Mr. Reese and I talked about this resolution after having to see the news about domestic terrorism that took place in Buffalo, New York, and then domestic terrorism that took place in Uvalde, Texas. Excuse me, so I am going to read the first part, and I've asked Mr. Reese to read the sections that cover the resolutions. Whereas Missouri has long suffered from gun violence crisis, as it has the sixth highest rate of gun violence in the country. Whereas Missourians experience the average loss of one thousand two hundred and twenty-two people they know and or love, and witness two thousand five hundred and eighty-four others wounded by guns in an average year in Missouri. Whereas St. Louis' two leading children hospitals treated more young people with gunshot wounds in two thousand twenty than they had for any other calendar year on record. Whereas Missouri continues to face high level of gun suicides, with most of the gun deaths in the state being by suicide. Whereas it is easier for a Missourian to get a gun or a high-powered assault rifle than it is to register to vote. Whereas the United States has witnessed domestic terrorists easily gain access to military-style assault rifles, and then use those weapons to murder people while they attend church, shop in grocery stores, and enjoy movies at movie theaters. Whereas the United States has witnessed domestic terrorists, terrorists easily gain access to military-style rifles, and then use those weapons to murder innocent children and teachers in school buildings. Whereas we believe the Second Amendment was created for, quote, "a well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state," end quote, and not to allow domestic terrorists to murder innocent men, women, and children with military-style assault rifles and guns. Whereas Maplewood will work in partnership with the Maplewood Richmond Heights School District to ensure that the students and their families of M R H, as well as its staff and administration, never have to endure the grief, pain, loss, and suffering endured by Robb Elementary School in Uvalde, Texas. Now therefore be it resolved, the city, excuse me, the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, as follows. Mr. Reese?
Greater safety requirements must be implemented to prevent the violent use of firearms in Missouri, and the Maplewood City Council supports practical firearm legislation, including, number one, requiring all gun buyers to pass a criminal background check, no matter how they purchase or fire. Number two, banning gun sales to domestic violence offenders. Number three, passing secure store, storage laws that require people to store firearms securely to prevent unsupervised access to those firearms. Number four, raising the minimum age to purchase all semi-automatic firearms to twenty-one. Number five, requiring background checks on all gun sales, and eliminate background check loopholes, which allows people to buy a firearm online or at a gun show with no background check. Number six, recognizing that army teachers is not an effective strategy for preventing gun violence in schools. Number seven, supporting school districts by increasing funding for programs and school staff that support mental health and social emotional well-being and learning. Eight, preventing access to firearms for individuals with your mental health evaluation or diagnosis could be considered a danger to themselves or others. Nine, removing the prohibition on gun violence research by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. Ten, banning bump stocks and limiting the size of ammunition clips. And eleven, passing an extreme risk order, risk protection order F, a red flag bill, to allow relatives and law enforcement to temporarily remove firearms from individual in crisis.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. If, if council is following what's happening in our U. S. Congress, the Senate is discussing some of these measures now. I hope that they are passed. But as for the city of Maplewood, I ask that the council does support this resolution, because we don't need to wait for D. C. to do their job, we need to start pushing. And I, I, I believe that this resolution calls for that. So with that being said, may I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor. Excuse me, that is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Buckingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Philip.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash thirty-four is approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number eleven, and actually, before we go into appointments, I just want to let the council know that there is one vacancy that remains on Design Review, and that's only because I'm not, I have not had the opportunity to talk to that person in, to talk to that person. I, what I've done is, now I will call the person that I would like to submit to you all for appointment, talk with them, ask, ask them if they're still interested in the appointment, let them know that it's, I need them to be at the meeting. So if they're not able to be at the meeting, then, you know, you may need to reconsider some things. So I'd just like to have that conversation before I submit their name to you all, and I was not able to do that with one person. So I am going to submit that name to you all in July. Just wanted to give you a heads up before we start going through. All right. All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number eleven.
A resolution of the city council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri, appointing Tyler Newberry to the Board of Adjustment and Housing Board of the Fields, and establishing her term of office as expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Buckingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Philip.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash thirty-five is approved.
Madam Clerk, item number twelve.
Resolution of the city council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri, appointing Janine Salad to the Civil Service Commission, and establishing her term of office as expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Philip.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Buckingham.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash thirty-six is approved.
Madam Clerk, item number thirteen.
A resolution of the city council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri, appointing Linda Robinson to the Civil Service Commission, and establishing her term of office as expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Philip.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Buckingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash thirty-seven is approved.
Madam Clerk, item number fourteen.
A resolution of the city council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri, appointing Lauren Savel to the Designer Review Board and Historic Preservation Commission, and establishing her term of office as expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Philip.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Buckingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash thirty-eight is approved.
Madam Clerk, item number fifteen.
A resolution of the city council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri, appointing Dr. Jill Boyett to the Human Services Commission to fill an unexpired term, and establishing her term of office as expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Philip.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Buckingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash thirty-nine is approved.
Madam Clerk, item number sixteen.
A resolution of the city council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri, appointing Victoria Story to the Human Services Commission to fill an unexpired term, and establishing her term of office as expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Philip.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Buckingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash. Resolution twenty-two dash forty is approved.
Madam Clerk, item number seventeen.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, appointing Kim Gifford to the Library Board and establishing her term of office as expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam, I'm sorry. Okay, hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Philip.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash forty-one is approved.
Madam Clerk, item number eighteen.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, reappointing Krypa Nipia to the Library Board and establishing her term of office as expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Philip.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash forty-two is approved.
Madam Clerk, item number nineteen.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, appointing Kristen Spencer to the Library Board and establishing her term of office as expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Philip.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash forty-three is approved.
Madam Clerk, item number twenty.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, appointing Keenan Enders to the Parks and Recreation Commission and establishing his term of office as it's expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Philip.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash forty-four is approved.
Madam Clerk, item number twenty-one.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, appointing Johnny Lewis to the Parks and Recreation Commission, establishing his term of office as expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Philip.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash forty-five is approved.
Madam Clerk, item number twenty-two.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, reappointing Beth Newman to the Parks and Recreation Commission and establishing her term of office as it's expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Philip.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash forty-six is approved.
Madam Clerk, item number twenty-three.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, appointing Colin Basset to the Plan and Zoning Commission and establishing his term of office as expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Philip.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash forty-seven is approved.
Madam Clerk, item number twenty-four.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, appointing James Bryan to the Plan and Zoning Commission and establishing his term of office as expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Philip.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash forty-eight is approved.
Madam Clerk, item number twenty-five.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, appointing Eliza Coriel to the Special Business District Tax Advisory Commission to fill a vacancy and establishing her term of office as expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Philip.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash forty-nine is approved.
Madam Clerk, item number twenty-six.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, reappointing Christopher Kelling to the Special Business District Tax Advisory Commission and establishing his term of office as expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Philip.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash fifty is approved.
Madam Clerk, item number twenty-seven.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, reappointing Ralph Bigme to the Sustainability Commission and establishing his term of office as expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Philip.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash fifty-one is approved.
Madam Clerk, item number twenty-eight.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, reappointing Stefan Benson to the Sustainability Commission and establishing his term of office that's expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Philip.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash fifty-two is approved.
Madam Clerk, item number twenty-nine.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, appointing Thomas Van Sheek to the Sustainability Commission and establishing his term of office as it's expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Philip.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash fifty-three is approved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do you need to drink a water before we go into this next one? All right, we ready, we ready, Madam Clerk? All right, here we go. Item number thirty.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to retain services of Fick Egdmire and Williamson to perform an audit of all city funds for the fiscal years ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and twenty twenty-six at a cost not to exceed twenty-four thousand dollars and an additional three thousand five hundred dollars for a single audit and one hundred dollars per hour for any additional work required.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Philip.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash fifty-four is approved.
Madam Clerk, item number thirty-one.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to retain the services of Fox, Deal, and Company to perform non-attest services, including ATFR preparation and single audit preparation of all city funds for the fiscal years ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and twenty twenty-six at a cost not to exceed thirty-five thousand eight hundred dollars, thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars, thirty-eight thousand two hundred dollars, thirty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars, and forty-one thousand six hundred dollars, respectively, and a cost not to exceed two hundred eighty dollars per hour for any additional work required.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, I just quick question. Uh, these are contracts we're signing for five years?
Yes, they are.
Okay, uh, you, I'm sure you realize you probably have to have it resigned in three. Right, because you can't sign a contract that binds a council from one.
As long as there is a provision that allows the council to, um, opt out, basically to overturn the contract, then, um, it's a so as long as, I, I haven't worked this system, but as long as that provision is included, then it can be more than likely.
I got you, okay. That's all I have.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Philip.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash fifty-five is approved.
Madam Clerk, item number thirty-two.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to accept a proposal for legal services for the period of July one, twenty twenty-two, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, with Lewis Rice LLC.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Philip.
Yes.
And Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash fifty-six is approved.
Madam Clerk, item number thirty-three.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, appointing Karen Shite as city clerk.
I'm going to read this resolution. I wish y'all could see the book she gave me. Whereas section three point seven of the city charter provides for the city council to appoint an officer of the city who has the title of city clerk and whereas Karen Shite has currently, is currently serving as the deputy city clerk for the city and whereas the city council wishes to appoint Karen Shite to the position of city clerk, whose duties shall be specified in the chart, excuse me, whose duties shall be as specified in the city charter and code. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri as follows. Section one, Karen Shite shall be appointed to the position of city clerk for the city of Maplewood to serve the pleasure of the city council. And section two, said appointment shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval. You have been our city clerk for years, so you finally get the full title. And I, I never, I never called you deputy because that's too much. It is a lot of words. But now I feel good that I really get to say, Madam Clerk. So that being said, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones. Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash fifty-seven is approved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number thirty-four.
Bill sixty-one ninety-two, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, adopting the budget for the city of Maplewood, Missouri for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and twenty-two, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
That was the final reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
The Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Ordinance number five nine eight seven is approved.
Congratulations, y'all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number thirty-five.
Bill sixty-one ninety-three, an ordinance repealing section fourteen dash four seven six, regulation of soliciting in the right of way of the City of Maplewood Code of Ordinance.
That was the final reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mayor. Excuse me, Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Ordinance number five nine eight eight is approved.
Madam Clerk, item number thirty-six.
Old Business Ordinance Review Committee.
Any reports?
Yes, my committee met with the Plan and Zoning Commission, so in a joint work session on Monday, June sixth, and it was a lively discussion that has been posted to YouTube. We discussed the pros and cons of the potential accessory dwelling unit ordinance changes and current and future availability of affordable housing in Maplewood, potential parking and traffic implications, potential processes for approval. And at this point, our next committee meeting is tentatively set for July eleventh. That is the second Monday of every month. We've been having some trouble with some scheduling over the last couple of months, so I just wanted to confirm with everyone, everyone's schedules before we commit to that date again, but it is tentatively July eleventh and still via Zoom.
Okay, at long last, I found a home on a thank you, Mayor, for doing that coming in midterm. I was feeling a little distracted, so thank you. I also wanted to start by just to make apology to Matt Quayle, who we sort of snapped through our communication, and so I'm sure he'll join us next time, but he wasn't able to join us for this first meeting. So we're just kind of laying some groundwork. We're looking at the occupancy permits. I think it's a source of some frustration and some angst, and so we're really trying to be really systematic about how to look at this. We're starting with the most basic defining terms. We're discussing what equity questions we'll use to guide our committee and perhaps we'll share with other committees if they want to use what we come up with. We're going to apply these questions to the occupancy permit section of the code first. So we talked about a lot of things. But so trying to not understand what the intent was, so how, what the impact, of course, is. We're also doing some work to just outline the data information that will educate and help indicate, you know, with that perception of this occupancy permit, this has been an issue, I think, for Maplewood. And I should also thank Michael Winstone for doing a lot of the groundwork. Your intrepid intern for the mayor, he's done a lot of great work for us, so thank you, Michael. At the moment, we are researching equity definitions, so we're, the next time we meet, which I believe is June twentieth, is that right? Twenty-third, excuse me. So that, the next time we come around, we'll have a good, hopefully, list of questions and have some definitions to share. And we talked about, you know, maybe enshrining that definition somewhere where it actually has some, some meaning in an ordinance rather than a resolution, so sort of understand, and if I've forgotten something, Mayor, come me up.
Excuse me, I think the only thing I would add is that we plan to have conversations with Chief Marsack and also Brian Heard in the near future, and our goal is to be able to have something to present to council in August. Yeah. Good job.
Thank you.
All right, any additional ordinance review committee reports?
Just briefly, offenses met on the twenty-eighth of last month. We have officially wrapped up our discussion. No, I'm sorry, we will be wrapping up our discussion on tobacco and start discussing the curfew section of the offenses ordinance. Our next meeting is June twenty-fifth at nine AM. That is a Saturday, so if you're looking for pre-brunche activity, I encourage you to tune in.
Nice. All right, any additional reports? Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number thirty-seven.
Council Communication.
Any communication?
I have one thing I want to say to our city manager and to public work, Mr. Anthony. We did follow up with the request that we had Mr. Harper that came in last meeting about what were some of the things that's going on, and I want to report two of the address, yours has been cut, everything has been cleaned up, and we are still working on other things, so just want to let the council and our people know that we are working very diligently to get things done, and we have improved on items that was requested on last meeting. So I'm happy for that.
Great job. Great job. Thank you to our, our city hall administration and for council member Jones. Thank you. All right, any additional communication? Okay, Madam Clerk, item number thirty-eight.
Mayor's Report.
Thank you. I want to give council the heads up that we will have a work session at, before our regularly scheduled council meeting in July. That work session is going to cover ordinances that I've talked about with you all, so we can start to look at these ordinances, see the suggested changes that I have, and then hear any suggestions that you all may have, so we can work together to address some, some things. Also, I wanted to report on Juneteenth, which is Freedom Day. That will be celebrated on this Saturday from one four. Appreciate council member Phillips providing that in announcements. I just wanted to, excuse me, reiterate, it will be at the Yale Green Space, and I hope that council members can just go out for a little bit. I mean, it's going to be really hot, but there's supposed to be snow cones there the whole time. Yes, snow cones are life, so just go if you can, just for a little bit. Talk with some community members, and then I just want to make sure that I let you all know, I have to be out of town for support of a dear friend who lost his father, and so I will be at the event, but I'll be late. I have asked council member Jones to stand in my stead and at the beginning of the event, because I believe there's going to be a song, lift every verse and sing. Can someone, yeah, yeah, we got, we got to learn that, at least the first verse. Saturday. But I will be there just late, and I think it's going to be a great event. So that is it. And also, thank you, council member Jones, for stepping in into that place for me. And then finally, I just want to thank the, the city of Maplewood and our community members for coming together and making sure that this is going to be a successful event and that it is an annual event. This is year two, and I'm just grateful and thankful for our community. Madam Clerk, item number thirty-nine.
City Attorney's Report. Assistant Deputy.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number forty.
City Manager's Report.
Yes, thank you. I have a couple items. Number one is for the efforts tonight of pointing members to boards and commissions. The appropriate liaison will be following up with those folks right away, so we can make sure that we get them plugged into the next, the next meeting of that respective board of commissioners, bring them up to speed. We've developed welcome packets for those folks who are joining, so we want to make it a seamless transition. They'll be following up and see us tomorrow. For all those who reported tonight. Secondly, this is a couple of months old, but, you know, I really love our parks in Maplewood. One of the things that I love. And I just wanted to reference how in St. Louis Magazine, the April version,